Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Planning Commission, Millbury Planning Commission meeting for November first, two thousand and twenty-one. And I will not be reading the video conferencing, but this is being held via video conference. Only over Zoom, and we do have information on the agenda regarding how to come and speak publicly if you'd like to be a part of that. No one is in this in in the meeting present in the chambers, but we're all. There is a way to be able to know how to virtually come and speak. I'll go ahead and call this meeting to order, and then we have the real call, please.
Commissioner Dong Agro.
Present.
Commissioner Wong.
Present.
Commissioner Quake.
You're muted.
Sorry.
Sorry.
Thank you. Vice Chair Davis here. And Chair Joe.
Present.
Thank you.
Thank you, and now we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance. So I think we have a flag. Oh, it's really little on this. What it looks like. So, okay, so let's begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States. And to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay, and we will have item number one is agenda review. Do we have any items? Do any of the commissioners have anything that we need to note in terms of our agenda for the meeting? Okay, seeing none, we'll go to approval of the minutes. So this is the meeting minutes for the regular meeting of October fourth, two thousand and twenty-one. Do we have any motion to the comments? Commissioner Quake.
I make a motion that we accept.
Second.
We have motion in a second. We have the votes, please.
Commissioner Dong Agro.
Yes.
Commissioner Wong.
Ruth.
Commissioner Quake.
Yes.
Vice Chair Davis.
Yes.
And Chair Joe.
I'm gonna abstain since I wasn't here at that time.
Great, so the minutes are approved four zero with Chair Joe abstaining due to absence.
Thank you, and then item number three is public communication. So this is reserved for persons wishing to comment on any items under the purview of the Planning Commission, but not on the agenda this evening. So do we have any persons who wish to speak? Again, this is not on anything not on the agenda. Staff, do we see anybody? Nope. Okay, great. So we will go on to item four, which is our public hearings. Four A is on Eight Dexter Place. This is a public hearing on a design review permit application to allow the construction of a new second-story addition to an existing single-story, single-family residence located in the Single Family Residential R1 zoning district. May we have the staff report, please?
Commissioners, I'd like to present to you a new assistant planner, Christian Santana. This is his first project and his first planning commission meeting, and he'll be making the presentation for this project.
Great, I was about to say something about that. So welcome, Christian, and it's your first presentation, so.
Thank you. Thank you guys for having me. Well, thank you, Chair Joe and fellow planning commissioners. Before we start off, there were a few inconsistencies on the reports that you guys reviewed this weekend that I wanted to go over before we start the presentation. So. Let's see, if you look at the staff reports on page one, there is a square footage calculation that incorrectly include the deck garage and the covered patio as part of the square footage, which which is incorrect, that fourteen hundred and sixty-six square feet is proposed living space, not parts, which does not include the deck garage or covered patio square footages. On page two, I believe it's the second to last paragraph, there is a typo that's building height should be seventeen feet and eleven and a quarter inch, not twelve feet and eight and a quarter inch. And lastly, for the report, for the plans on sheet eight-two, there were two typos. One of the typos was the proposed lower floor addition should be one hundred and six square feet, not one hundred and twenty-two square feet. And the upper floor addition square footage should be eight hundred and forty-nine square feet, not eight hundred and fifty-six square feet. So with that, let me share my screen.
Thank you. And are all the commissioners okay?
They're not fake numbers.
Thank you.
Can you see my screen?
Yes.
Awesome. So thanks again for introducing me. My name is Christian Santana. I am the assistant planner. I've been working with the applicant Alex Zeng, as well as his assistant Stephanie on this project, and tonight I'm glad to from bring this application to the planning commission. So the existing property, well, the design review permit application is to allow the construction of a new second-story addition to an existing single single-story, single-family residence located at in Eight Dexter Place in the R1 zoning district. So here's the outline of where Eight Dexter is within the city of Millbury. It is located within the Meadow Glen neighborhood, represented by this little star right here. A little background information, the existing property is a single, single-story home on a five thousand one hundred and sixteen square foot existing interior lot on the east side of Dexter Place. This lot is located in the R1 zone and and the proposal is to construct a second-floor addition of eight hundred and forty-nine square feet with a one hundred and six first-floor addition to an existing eighteen hundred and fifty-five square foot home for a total of twenty-eight hundred and ten square feet. So here's the existing site plan. The, as mentioned before, the existing single-family residence is on the east side of Dexter Place in between L'Oreal and Robert Place. Here is the proposed site plan. And just to call out, this is where the typo is on the plan. This should be eight hundred and forty-nine square feet, and this should be one hundred and six square feet right here. And this is just a quick representation of where that one hundred and six square foot first-floor addition is being added on to. It wasn't entirely clear on the plan, so I just wanted to call it out here. So this is the existing floor plan. The single, the existing residence contains three bedrooms, two bathrooms, a kitchen, an entryway, a covered porch, and the attached two-car garage. Here is the proposed first-floor plan. And this would include the two bedrooms, two bathrooms, a living room, a storage place space, a kitchen, a dining room, the covered porch, as well as the attached two-car garage. And here is the proposed second-floor addition. The second floor would include two bedrooms, one bathroom, an office, and a family room. Here is the existing front face of the front-facing elevation. And here is an existing rear-facing elevation. Here is one of the corrections I wanted to point out, the the building height itself is seventeen feet and eleven and a quarter inch, and here it is represented on the plan. Here is the existing left-side elevation. As well as the existing right-side elevation. Here is the proposed front-facing elevation with the second-story addition. And the rear, proposed rear-facing addition with the second-story addition. Here is the left-side proposal. And the right side. And here is the proposed design. So the applicant Alex Zeng is proposing to provide exterior finishes of a light shade, light blue shade color called soaring eagle, charcoal-colored chingle roofing, these six-foot-high brown fences existing, white vinyl windows with matching wood trim, a dark gray wood front door that would be existing, and wood white garage doors. And here is the the response from the neighbor consultation forms. So a total of seven neighborhood neighbor consultation forms were sent out to adjacent neighbors. Five returned the forms in support of the project. One did not return the form, and one did return the form citing their opposition to the project. So one of the comments from the neighbor that opposes the project were two main concerns. So one concern was the, they had concerns about the mass and the bulk of the second-story addition, which was particularly large in terms of affecting their reuse and as well as sunlight from from their property on Thirty Robert Place. And the second concern was the loss of privacy with constructing the second-story addition. Staff took these concerns into consideration and provided some evaluations. The applicants included in the project plan a solar axis study as well as a window study, which I'll present right after this slide. The proposed house, a second-story addition meets upper-floor setback requirements, and it's consistent with other second-story additions within the neighborhood. The Millbury City Code does not require a rear upper-floor setback, which might be where the concern is about the mass and bulk of the structure. But that's not something that the city code specifically outlines in terms of having a rear upper-floor setback. The configuration of the two upper-floor windows limit the visibility of the second-story proposal from into the rear of the yard of Thirty Robert Place, and this slide shows the window study that was conducted. These dotted lines represents where visibility would be visible from the vantage point of the second floor. As you can see, there's not really much visibility into the yard of Thirty Roberts Place from the position of the windows within the second-floor addition. The following findings are required under section ten point zero five point two five zero zero under the Millbury Municipal Code for the planning commission to approve the requested sign-review permit. The architectural landscaping and general appearance of the proposed building or or structure and grounds are in keeping with the character of the neighborhood. The project complies with all applicable development regulations. The project will not cause a significant visual impact to neighboring views from principal rooms of the residence, and the proposal is not detrimental to the orderly, harmonious, and safe development of the city, and will not impair the desirability of investment or occupation in the neighborhood in which the building or structure is erected. In conclusion, staff recommends the pine commission consider adopting a resolution to approve design review permit number twenty-one one oh one to allow the construction of a new single-story addition to an existing single-story, single-family home at Eight Dexter Place, subject to the attached conditions of approval. This concludes staff's presentation. I believe Alex, the applicant, is also on the line, so staff is here to take any questions, but Alex is also here to give a very brief overview of the project.
Thank you very much, and great job, Christian. Do we have any questions of staff before we have, before we hear from the applicant? Commissioner Quake.
Um, yes, a very great presentation for your first one. Thank you. What is the distance from the two backyards from the Dexter property to the Robert property? I know those are kind of circular, so they might be a little bit closer than on on straight streets. But do we have a number for that?
Excuse me, just a moment if you can hold on to that, but so I've thought about this a little bit. Maybe I should have entered, said it earlier, but my home, personal home, is about two blocks away from this. I think it's five hundred to a thousand feet away. So I think it's in best interest to recuse myself from this proceeding.
Do we have directions from, thank you.
Commissioner Wong.
Commissioner Wong said you're how far away?
I'm about five hundred to a thousand feet away.
Five hundred to a thousand. Staff, what is the staff?
He's recusing himself.
He wants to recuse himself, or he's thinking that it might be. He might.
I.
I don't know. Staff, what is the?
Yes, so Commissioner Joe and Commissioner Wong, so just to clarify, you're beyond five hundred feet from the subject property?
Yes.
Right, estimate on the maps.
Okay, if you're beyond five hundred feet, it does not appear that there would be a conflict of interest unless you feel there are other aspects of the project which would lead you to be have have a conflict.
Yes.
So as a, as a general rule, beyond five hundred feet would not recuse you from hearing this item.
Okay, I'm at least two blocks away. Lots are a little bit short, but okay, appreciate that, so I'll stay on then. Thank you. Okay.
Okay, thank you. That's okay. Yeah, in in the future, it would be good if you, if any of the commissioners have such concerns to just either let me or the chair at that time know in advance of the meeting, just so that we can, you know, we can clarify that beforehand. But thank you for bringing it up. And going back to Commissioner Quake's question now, the staff, you gave staff, Commissioner Wong gave staff a little bit of time to look that up. So do you have that answer for her, please?
Yeah, I believe if Alex wants to take a stab at this question, I'll defer to him because we weren't provided with the exact measurements, but I'll let Alex speak.
Okay, for sure, it does say that the rear setback of this house is at least seventeen feet, ten inches. So I know Commissioner Quake's probably aware of that, but I think your concern was regarding the other houses setback. Is that? Okay, so so if we can find that out, any other questions of staff? Or did Commissioner Quake, were you finished, or did you have other questions?
No, I was just trying to get a better concept of the difference between the two houses. I I know they're in more of a circular pattern than straight, north and south and east and west. That sometimes makes a big difference, and that's why I was trying to figure out how the backyards. It's hard when you go down those streets.
Sure, understood. So we'll hopefully get more of that information from the applicant. Did you have any other questions, though? No, okay. Any other commissioners have any questions of staff at this time? No, okay, so seeing them, we'll go ahead and move on toward to the applicant. So I believe Alex, Mr. Alex Zeng is here. And welcome, and please add any, maybe if you can answer Commissioner Quake's question, as well as add any other information that would be helpful to us.
Thank you, commissioners, and thank you, Christian, for your great first presentation for my project. Such an honor. So I'm just gonna jump in and tell you from my existing house. Christian, if you don't mind showing that site plan again, that that has the view towards the back of the Robert. Yeah, that, that will do. So, so again, this diagram shows our property related to the Robert. That in precision, Chris. Great. So, yeah, the the top of the page is where my immediate Robert neighbor is, which is directly towards the back, and Thirty Robert is on the right side. So if I measure from the existing corner of my existing house, which is the eight-foot-four setback, yeah, right there. So and then go below. So my, my direct, sorry, my distance from my corner to their corner in a diagonal fashion currently measures about forty-four feet. So when I build up, I'm setback a further five feet away from there. So I will say it's roughly at least forty-six feet diagonally from their closest corner is what it is. We we find that, you know, this separation is more than healthy. As you can see, our lower-floor setback, you know, even though we are adding towards the lower floor, we never exploit the whole five feet setback minimum. We left eight and a half feet roughly, because we want to keep healthy setback from neighbors. And, you know, Millbury, when we do the second floor, we have to setback further, but the client understand the implication, and they still step back voluntarily. So by doing all these moves, I think we are trying our best to stay away from the neighbors. And hopefully that answer Commissioner Quake's question will be definitely more than forty-five feet diagonally.
Monsieur Quake, is that what you're looking for?
I I understood now. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anything else, Mr. Zeng, that you would like to add?
Yeah, so I'm not gonna go through the design. The design is, you know, naturally pretty straightforward. It's gonna be a four-bedroom, two-bath, four-family of five, including an office. So if you see the floor plan, nothing tricky, nothing trying to sneak in for rental and something. It's all self-contained, self-enjoyment. The way that we do is stuff like knocking down existing architecture. As you can see, the existing architecture is very, very cute, like it has a lot of six-acts, and, you know, most architect would not go for the same attempt as us, like just follow all the setback through and six-act the upper floor that we did, like we preserved the unique character of the lower floor and do the upper floor. And as a result, our application has no exception, being asked no setback violation with either meet or exceed the setback requirements. When we submit this application, we have not hear back from any opposition. We hear five support and two no response until very, very late in the process when Christian told us that this neighbor actually filed a opposition. So immediately, we actually did reach out. We tried to reach out to this neighbors. She is a little bit harder to reach, because the first time when our client tried to hand-deliver a drawing to her, she was like, I don't want to talk about it, not not interested, because I'm not architect or literate. So but because he's, she sent in a opposition, so we actually tried to make another attempt to reach out to her, which was successful. So we, my client actually spoke with her over weekend, which is last week, not this immediate last weekend, but the weekend before, and tried to spoke about fifteen minutes and tried to understand. It is that to us, it was a general fear that a second floor would block a lot of her light and, you know, privacy and stuff like that. So we tried to show her, you know, how drawing again and show our upper-floor plan. And to a point, we are even agreeable that if you can show our second floor plan, Christian, I would appreciate. Normally, we will have two windows, one on each side of our nightstand. So we're willing to remove one window that is directly facing that angle, so second floor. There it goes. So as you can see, the upper right corner on this one, so our bed is gonna lie on the right-hand side where we're we're supposed to have a left and right window beside each bed. We removed the upper right window, which will provide a direct forty-five angle towards there here, like we voluntarily removed that too, so that we are not really having any windows staring at that direction. The window facing our backyard, however, it's necessary. By building code, we have to have the egress window. So like, like unless I I mean, we we believe that we are addressing the neighbors' need on top of our already pretty far away from the from the neighbors by how we do the architecture. So hopefully, this answers or gives you our perspective, and hopefully find that our solution is acceptable, and we can plan a state.
I'm sorry, did you say that you removed a window from this current plan, or it's?
On the upper right. On the upper right corner facing.
So that window.
Yeah, originally, there should be another one towards the top of the page.
I see. So you already removed it in this.
Yeah.
Okay, any, thank you very much, and any questions of the applicant from commissioners?
Yes, question here.
Through the chair. May I, sorry, may I, may I step in here just for a moment?
Sure.
For the discussion. So upon further research, apparently, if if commissioner's property is within one five, between five hundred and a thousand feet, the Fair Political Practice Commission needs to make a determination that there is clear and convincing evidence that the decision will not have any measurable impact on the official's property. So I think, given that, we, I think it's best to have Commissioner Wong recuse himself for this.
Okay. Okay, sorry, Commissioner Wong, but thank you for bringing it up again. And again, in future, everyone, please do it in advance so that we can keep the meeting going smoothly. Can we put Commissioner Wong, I guess, in a waiting room? Is that appropriate? Or or have him log off? For now?
I I think it would be best to have him log off and then come back in to the meeting after after this item. We can let him know after this item is finished.
Thank you. So Commissioner Wong, if you can log off, and then we'll contact you as soon as we get to the next one. Okay, I think you see off or? Okay, Commissioner Del Negro, I think you had your hand up.
Yes, so I might do actually take appreciation to the concession of that window in the corner for privacy. I think it's a very good move for your neighbors' needs. Any views on possibly putting a tree in the back corner as well for their yard? Was that considered?
Uh, yes, definitely. So that will be our I I'm just gonna be frank. So we we want to, like, like, the yard is not deep, so if we can run around without trees, that will be great, but applicants will be willing to add one of those upper vitating tree that is tall but not super wide. If the neighbor does not find our solution deemed feasible for her, but, you know, of course, we want to commit the the least possible in our application. But it is definitely not our preference to forsake privacy, like our clients want privacy too. So let's say they are seeing something that they don't want, they might plant a tree there too. So that is actually an option, but we're hoping that it is not a requirement, but if commissioner feel strongly that a tall tree needs to be reckoned that.
I wouldn't. I would not feel strongly, but it's always a nice neighborly thing to offer if it's possibility.
To the, to the neighbor if she wants that.
I would obviously note that that community that you're in, a lot of second-story additions come before our era of setbacks. So a lot of the houses do have these forward-facing second-story additions. They're kind of like towards the street edge of the houses and over garages. So I recognize that, obviously, maybe the expectations of some of the neighbors may be that there's no, I guess, there is some type of back setback, because none of the other houses locally have that that far back massing. But yes, it does appear that you are within the current design code for the city, and I can appreciate that. I also had another question about when I always ask, which is the expected duration of the bill. How long do you think the project will take?
Yes, so I've been doing business around here too. So I would say after this planning commission, let's say we got, you know, blessed and approved, we are gonna get the building submitted, probably by spring, we should get a building permit. And it should roughly take six to nine months, depending on availability of materials and also what kind of crew to get. Like, it's hard to take, but definitely not. and also what kind of crew they get. Like, it's hard to take, but definitely not over a year, like.
Right. And the one thing I must say about the house design, that something I'm not a fan of is the front facade around the drive, around the garage itself. Now, there's nothing that takes away from that flat wall face of just pure stucco. Is there anything you'd consider as far as adding an element, whether it be some type of stone, some type of other element to the face of the garage to reduce that sort of stucco flat facing wall towards the street?
Yes, so, so it was, it was just existing, like, that's just existing. So most clients try to focus the money on where they build, but probably nothing super dramatic on there. But I, I have quite some success recently in adding a trellis element, which, which will fit nicely in that, you know, forehead of the garage. And it will make some nice element without breaking my client's wallet. So I think we could discuss that with the client and probably with the planner and see if it's an acceptable move.
Great, thank you. Because I look at the, obviously, when you add a second story and you start adding more stucco facing at a layer above it, it starts to feel like you have a lot of stucco facing towards the street without any elements breaking up that space.
But we did setback really far towards the back, but we did not exploit the front at all.
The last item that I had a question about was the hallway window. As you come up the stairwell, you have a large tall hallway window that does face towards the neighbor to your north side. And that neighbor did not have any problem with that window and you discussed specifically that window facing their property.
Yeah, there's, they're in support.
Great, all right, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Any other commissioners? Okay, thank you. So we will now go ahead and open the public comment, public hearing section. Do we have any members of the comment who wish to speak? Any members of the public who wish to comment? Looking to, yeah.
There are no hands yet or at this time.
Okay, so there are no hands at this time. Okay, then can we go ahead and I guess vote to close the public comment section? Do we have a motion? Can you, Commissioner Quig?
Okay. Close the public comment.
Of close the public comment, okay, in a second.
Do we have to vote?
I was told we have to vote.
All right then, I second.
I was told we have to, we've never voted before.
All I know is, excuse me, but over the years that I have been on the planning commission, I have seen this go from yes, you have to vote, no, you don't have to vote. Yes, you have to vote, but so whatever they tell you.
Yeah, I was told this that the, before the last meeting, so.
Okay, we'll do it.
Let's just do it quick. Can we have a vote on closing the public comment?
I guess now we're in a yes and no.
Commissioner Quig?
Yes.
Vice Chair Davis?
Yes.
And Chair Joe?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So now we'll go ahead and open it up to commissioner comments and any motions, many motions if any. Would like to start? Commissioner Quig?
I, I do like the project and driving down Dexter today, I think this is the last one that does not have a second story on it. Some are a little bit more attractive, some not quite as attractive. I, I do think if they could put something along the garage, there is a lot of stucco. I, I, I think that would be a definite plus. But other than that, I think it's a, it's a good project and it just will fit into the neighborhood with the second story. I don't know how anybody else feels about it, but you know, trees are always good. They're good for the environment, so I don't know if the, the Mr. Tang is hearing us that putting in a tree to kind of separate the two homes and give a little bit more privacy is a very good idea. I don't know how any of the other commissioners feel about it, but I think more screening is always better. But other than that, I think it's a good project.
Thank you. It's only two of you left, so Commissioner Del Negro or Commissioner Davis?
You know, I can, I have one more comment.
Sure.
So can we kind of, without coming back to us for anything, is kind of condition it that we'd like to see some kind of screening in the backyard? And maybe staff can kind of look at the project and maybe look to something that would soften up the front from the some extra stucco. Can we do something like that on a motion?
Staff?
Yes, yes, if the commissioners want to add a condition during the motion, I think that would be appropriate time to add that condition, adding an additional element to break up the facade in the front.
Okay, so that's a thought. Commissioner Del Negro?
Yeah, so that being said, is, is, you know, I'm okay if you add the tree too, but also there was offer to help pay for a tree for your neighbor to plant on their side of the fence as an alternative. See, tree's location depends on who wants it. I don't necessarily think it has to be on your side. I say it prefer to have it on their side.
We've got family feud in the background. Okay, Commissioner Davis?
Hi, it is gonna be a nice addition. It's, it's a good looking project. On the tree, taking out that window was actually a little probably over and above being kind because the houses are kitty cornered to each other and they're near fifty feet apart, corner to corner. So taking out the window was quite a bit. I love trees. If you need a tree in the backyard, plant it. But if the tree is gonna take up their backyard and it's gonna make a bunch of shade where they don't want it, I don't think we need to tell them to put in a tree. The two houses are not that close to each other. They're really not. And taking out the window, I think, has probably solved the problem at, on top of it. And the trellis does sound lovely. So that would be a nice add. And that's it.
Thank you. Did commissioners want to, so for myself, I would say I'm in agreement with Commissioner Davis. I think it's already, it's forty-six, forty-eight feet across from each other. So if they'd like to put in a tree, I think that's a great suggestion. I don't personally feel like it's something we need to put into as a requirement. And let me just finish with that. As a requirement, considering how far apart they are and also the concession of removing a window. And most people don't stand outside your window and just keep staring out, looking outside for the other neighbors anyway. But it's great that the, you know, I, I think that the applicant already has made some concessions to it. Did we, it would be, so personally, I don't think it's necessary unless commissioners feel strongly. And then the other aspect is, I think the trellis, it would be nice, I feel like with the setback and everything, when we're looking at renderings, you just see, it's hard to see that three dimensional aspect of it. So I don't think it'll be as big of a block of stucco as it looks like necessarily on paper. So I'm not, personally, I don't think it's necessary even to change that as well. So that's my thought. Commissioner Quig, you had something to say?
I do. I mentioned the tree because I'm a tree person and environmental. And if someone is willing to put up a tree, I think it's definitely a plus. I didn't especially say it needed to be done because the distance is okay. So it was more of a information to the architect because trees are good. But not necessarily for the privacy.
Okay, thank you. And I think Commissioner Del Negro had something.
Goes out, so I would not put it as mandatory to put a tree in. I suggest it be a neighborly thing to offer if the opportunity is there, whether it's on your property or theirs, it's just a neighborly relationship builder, obviously, with your neighbors. As far as the front facade, I do feel like I would prefer to see that as a design element to include is something to break up the stucco on the face. I did drive by, obviously, and saw the site, saw the house, and I recognized that the first floor doesn't have something on it now. It would make the community have a little bit more, or less of that front facing stucco walls. And I think it would be an ideal design element to include something.
So I think we can probably include that somewhat right stuff to, would that be a special condition? Or how would we structure that?
Yes, so I recommend that the commission, upon making the motion to approve design review permit with the condition that the applicant install trellis over the front garage door or somewhat feature.
Want them to work with the planning staff probably, right?
Definitely.
So, so something to the effect of the, to work with the planning staff to regarding it, not to just put up with any old trellis there.
Work with planning staff to add an architectural feature on the front elevation.
Okay. So if that sounds good, do we have a motion or do we have more questions, Commissioner Quig?
No, I was just gonna amend my motion to include working with staff to add something to the stucco on the front. As far as the tree, it would be more of a, we'd like you, but not a strong condition.
Okay, so you did make a motion then?
Yes, I did.
We have a second from Commissioner Del Negro and the votes, please.
Commissioner Del Negro?
Yes.
Commissioner Quig?
Yes.
Vice Chair Davis?
Yes.
Chair Joe?
Yes.
Motion carries four zero with Commissioner Wong recruiting himself.
Thank you very much and congratulations to the applicants. Please keep in mind that there is a ten day appeal period. So once that is over, you'll hear from the, our staff regarding steps forward. But congratulations and yes, we love trees. So if you can incorporate some for privacy, for the environment, for many other things, that would be great. Good luck. You wish you well. Can somebody please contact Commissioner Wong to make sure he can come back in?
I was emailing with him, so I'm emailing him back right now to let him know to join.
So we'll hold on for a second till he gets back in. One thing I miss about chambers is having the dais for these plants, having me able to spread them out.
I just bring it back to City Hall. Deal with it.
Oh, no, no, I mean, having it on the dais to be able to spread it out. Yeah. I don't see him yet. So those of you who are joining us, we're waiting for Commissioner Wong to rejoin us for a second. Okay, welcome back, Commissioner Wong, and we will go ahead to item eight A, I mean eight B, which is. Eight B, which is, this is a study session to honor design.
Because that's what it says.
I'm sorry, yeah, I don't know why, but in, anyway, in the staff report, it says study session, but this is a public hearing, yes? Okay, got it. So study session on the design review permit application to allow the significant demolition of an existing single story, single family residence and construction of a two story, single family residence in the single family residential zoning district for forty Manzanita Court. May we have the staff report, please?
Good evening, Chair Joe and planning commissioners. I just want to make sure that you guys are seeing a full screen of the presentation and not just the, the kind of cut down version, correct?
Yes.
Thank you. So just before I start, I just want to make a quick correction. On page four of the staff report, under the neighborhood response section, where it says support zero on the table, opposed two and unreturned two. We actually did receive, and I emailed you about this earlier today, we did receive a letter of support and a neighborhood consultation form from the west side neighbor at fifty Manzanita Court. So that was emailed to the commissioners earlier this morning as a additional correspondence for the, for the item tonight. And with that, I'll, I'll jump into my presentation. This for a design review permit. It's a study session for forty Manzanita Court. So the subject for tonight, it's a study session and it's a design review permit application to allow a significant demolition of an existing single story residence and the construction of a two story residence in the R ones. This map here just shows the location of the project site. It's in the Mills Estate neighborhood. This red dot here that I'm hovering over shows where it's located. A bit of project information, a background information, like you mentioned, it's, it's a property is located in the R one zone, the single family residential zone. The lot, it's an interior lot and measures just over nineteen thousand square feet. But I do have to mention that due to the existing existence of a public easement as well as significant slope in the rear of the lot, the develop, developable land, which is the number that we take the maximum allowed FAR from, is, is, is reduced to just over fourteen thousand square feet. The existing home, which you see in the picture here on the left, the single story home measures about, just about, just over twenty-four hundred square feet. And the proposal again is for the significant demolition of the home and the construction of the two story residence. This image here, I'll start going through some of the slides that you find in attached one, being the full sets of plans. This here is the existing site plan. So the house does meet, it's a single story home. It does meet all development standards. And I do want to point out that on the east side, which is where I'm hovering here, the right side, as you will, the setback, existing setback is at twenty feet. And all, all other setbacks are met as well as, as well as all development standards. And what's not captured in this image and the screen capture is the public utility easement in the rear as well as the significant slope. That's, that's, that's the lot. So moving along to the proposed site plan, again, it's, 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 it's a new second story. The new, the proposed site plan does meet all development standards as well. And as I mentioned, that on the east side of the lot, existing, it's a setback. They're now proposing to reduce that to a ten foot setback for the first story. But, but I do have to mention that, of course, the minimum requirement there is five feet. So they're still exceeding the setback there. They meet the setbacks for all other, all other sides, fronts, west side as well as rear, both for the first story and. Moving along to the existing floor plan, the existing floor plan, the existing house contains three bedrooms, two bathrooms, a living room, a kitchen, an entry, the attached two car garage and a family room and dining room. Here then is the proposed first story plan. The two car garage is, is here, it's kept and it's actually added to. So the garage is to remain. It also contains two bedrooms, two bathrooms, a family room, dining room, living room, entry, and then a mudroom as well. Moving along then to the proposed second story, it contains the primary bedroom, as well as two additional bedrooms, two bathrooms, and then a loft and a laundry room as well. Now I'll go through the elevation drawings, first existing and then proposed. This here is the existing front elevation. Then the existing rear elevation. The existing west side elevation. And then existing east side elevation. Moving on to the proposed elevations, this is the proposed front elevation. The proposed materials are stucco, both on the first and second story. There is a stone aspect or element to it as well, on first, by the, by the garage doors and, and the entry there as well. The roof is shingled roof. And then the both the the both the front door and the and the garage door are wood. And the the height of the home, it measures at, I believe, twenty eight feet and seven inches, where the maximum allowed height would be thirty feet in the R one zone. Moving on to the proposed rear elevation. Then proposed west side elevation. And then proposed east side elevation. Excuse me. And then, excuse me, this this rendering here shows, it just gives a bit of a better aspect and a better look at the materials and the colors that are being proposed. And then I do want to point out that originally the applicant had communicated with staff and and this was one of the original designs that we kind of worked through the design review process to add some elements to make the house more meet the character of the neighborhood more. So you'll notice that this has some more kind of modern looks to it, modern aspects to it with the flat roof there. The roofing material is different as well. And then it doesn't have as much of the kind of stone elements that that we that we have. If I go back and this now proposed proposed design for the home. Moving on along to the neighbor response, a total of four neighbor consultation forms were sent to the adjacent neighbors. Like I mentioned, just before the start of the presentation, one of the neighbor neighbor forms was returned in support of the projects, that being the fifty Manzanita on the west side of the of the project site. Two of the neighbor forms were returned in opposition of the project and one neighbor form or one neighbor did not return their their form. So the neighbor neighbors at both twenty five Manzanita, which is right across the street, and thirty Manzanita, which is the east side neighbor. They both expressed concerns to staff through the through the consultation form regarding the new development. The neighbors mentioned loss of view from from for the from the post second story as well as privacy concerns. And first, we'll look at the neighbor concerns from ten twenty five Manzanita. The adjacent neighbor, again, they're directly across the street from the project site. At twenty five Manzanita, experts express concerns regarding loss of view in their neighbor consultation form. The applicants did reach out to the concerned neighbor during the neighbor consultation form, and they did have constant conversations at this point, though no agreement was reached. The neighbor provided staff with a photo of their affected view. And staff did hold multiple meetings with the applicants regarding how to address the neighbor view concerns. This here is the image and you'll find it attached in your packet. It's the photograph that was provided by the by the neighbor across the street at twenty five Manzanita. So you'll see here that the the affected view of the bay and the east bay, east bay hills, excuse me. Right around here. In terms of of staff planning commission or planning commission input, staff is requesting planning commission's input was with respect to the design review standard finding C. So in order to grant a design review permit, one of the findings that the planning commission has to make includes the language that reads quote, including a finding that the project will not cause a significant visual impact to neighboring views from principal rooms of a residence unless it is proven by the applicant that there is no other viable or cost effective effective alternative. The applicant did did prepare a document, an analysis document along with accompanying graphics and renderings. The alternate options were explored in this document and and the analysis, and these included just a single story addition, lowering the plate heights, a removal of a pine tree that's in the rear of forty Manzanita on that east side that is around where where the neighbor has the view concerns, increasing the second story setback on that on that right or east side. And then a story poll study was was completed as well. This first kind of alternate option that the applicants explored shows here a rendering of just a first story addition superimposed on onto the picture, onto the photograph provided by the neighbor across the street. So you'll notice here that the view is still affected by the addition. And again, I want to point out that there are constraints due to both the public utility easement in the rear and then the the significant slope that that limits the 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 land on which they can have an addition on on forty Manzanita. This second option that the that the applicant analyzed was lowering the plate height. So as we have them proposed on and as you'll find in the proposed sets of plans, the plate heights are at ten feet. So reducing them to eight feet was was another option that was looked at, but as you can see here in the rendering, that was superimposed. The the view is still affected. The changing of the plate heights doesn't doesn't really help in addressing the concern of of affected views. There's also a a analysis of removing a Monterey pine tree. So here in this picture in the back, the applicant looked at possibly removing this tree. They did obtain an arborist report, as you'll find attached, I believe, attachment number nine. And in it, the arborist does point out this tree as being unhealthy. This option would would sort of create a a different view from from what the from what the neighbor across the street currently has. And and this picture, which you find attached in your packet as well, is just a view from around where the where that tree is. So it's it's from the backyard at forty Manzanita, Manzanita, looking back into the bay. There's also an option of reducing the setback. So as proposed, the second story setback on the right side, meaning this side or the east side is at four feet due to the reduced first base back. Where it's 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 ten feet or the or the exceeding of the ten or exceeding of the first story. The applicant did look at possibly insetting that side setback, upper story side setback around three or three feet here. So it would be a set a seven foot second story setback rather than a rather than the proposed four foot. A second story setback. And it would add some some more kind of area of of view there. And this graphic here. And again, the applicants did have a story poll analysis done, and this sort of just shows the where the second story setback or where the second story wall would be located if if according to the full sets of plans they proposed. So again, that four foot second story setback on that side is is would be right here when where the cursor is. So in terms of staff analysis of the alternative options that were provided by the applicant, again, there is significant slope and the existent existence of a public utility easement and the rear of the lot. And this limits the amount of developable developable land for the for the project site. The area by the proposed pool, so that would be on the on the west side of the or left side of the of the project site does present an opportunity for an addition there. But again, the slope and the easement limit limited is almost the only usable outdoor space that the that the resident would have. That's in the area where they a pool on the proposed site plan. And increasing the second story setback may create issues with the proposed floor plan and could prevent the applicants from keeping the existing foundation as they're as they're currently proposing, which would in turn then significantly add to the cost of the project. As I mentioned, there are also concerns expressed by the east side neighbor at thirty Manzanita. The neighbor at thirty Manzanita expressed concerns regarding privacy and and the setbacks. The neighbor consultation form specified concerns with the new proposed setbacks on the east side of forty Manzanita as well as the height of the residence. As I mentioned earlier, the proposed first story set first story side setback for that side of of the project site, which is is the one abutting thirty Manzanita is proposed at ten feet, where the minimum requirement is five feet. And the second story setback there is 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 also met. In terms of height, the proposed building height is twenty eight feet and seven inches, where the maximum allowed height in the R one zone is thirty. The applicant is also proposing a two two foot lattice on top of the existing six foot fence abutting thirty Manzanita. The applicant did provide a window study, and that's included in your plans at on attachment one, I believe it's it's sheet PL and dash one. And with with this said, staff believes that the side yard setback on the east side of forty Manzanita, as well as the proposed two foot lattice, provide enough separation and privacy between the neighbors. That said, staffers recommending that the planning commission receive the presentation, review the project, consider the public testimony and provide staff with direction regarding a significant demolition of an existing single story residence and the construction of a new two story, single family residence in the R one zone. The project would then be brought to the planning commission at a future meeting for a public hearing and commission action. Staff is available for any questions and the project architect and applicant are here as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Guevara. And just to note, again, this is a study session, so their staff is just, we're not taking any actions tonight. We're just staff just wants to get direction from the planning commission. So with that said, do we have questions of staff at this time?
Yes, question?
Commissioner Wong?
So the staff in the report mentions partial demolition. What the portion of the structure, original structure is being salvaged versus what part is completely demolished on the existing home?
Sure. So let me just go back to the floor plans for site and here, it's 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 along the kind of the front here, Commissioner Wong. These walls are to remain as well as the foundation of the of the house itself. I believe you.
Yeah, you muted, Commissioner Wong.
Oh, can you point that out with the cursor or the?
Oh, sorry, I'm on the wrong screen right now. So it would be along here in the front and along the garage. And then the foundation of the home itself would be would be to remain as well.
So the front of the house and the garage front, that's original, not to be demolished.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Commissioner Davis?
Can you please define what principal rooms are?
Commissioner Davis, do you mean in terms of the primary bedrooms or?
No, principal as per as per worrying about where the views are coming from.
Correct. All right. And Roscoe maybe can can provide more detail, but I believe what what it means by principal room is I believe it's if it's not a bathroom or a kitchen, it it's if it's a living room, a bedroom, I believe are considered principal rooms. It's it's a little bit tough here in Millbury because we don't have a specific definition code. So I I think maybe Roscoe can provide a little a little bit more detail on that on that question there.
Yes, Mr. Guevara is correct, in the sense that in the past, we have defined principal rooms as a living room, bedrooms, kitchen. That's historically what how we have applied that. But that being said, as Guevara is correct, that the code currently does not contain a definition.
Does that answer your question, Commissioner? Okay, Commissioner Quake?
I don't remember a bedroom being the principal room.
I was gonna say that as well.
It was living areas like
The common living area.
Yeah, common living areas. Maybe it has changed and I missed up on it, but I don't remember a bedroom as a primary room. Meaning that the only rooms that we basically considered for view would be like the living room and in some situations, the kitchen, depending on how it was laid out.
To provide a little bit more, and that 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 could very well be the case, commissioners, the code does have a definition for principal use. That that differs from principal room, but principal use means a primary activity function or operation conducted on the premises. So according to that definition, principal use meaning primary activity of a single family home, you the living room, the kitchen where where the family does conduct their activities.
I I that one, right, principal rooms, okay.
Any other questions of staff? We'll have plenty of time for questions as well.
Yeah, one more question. A lot of these drawings and perspectives and the pictures of the view and the obstruction of the view, they're based on appears to be either the homeowner's pictures and renderings and drawings or the neighbors' photographs. Has there been any photographs and site during the site visits by Millbury staff to look and take photos of pictures because it'd be good to have independent party verification by independent parties taking pictures of perspectives and viewpoints.
And at this point, Commissioner Wong, the the, as you pointed out, the photograph was from the neighbor across the street and then the renderings prepared were by the by the applicants, architects for forty minutes. So staff has not, we do not have our own our own pictures we've taken at this point, no.
And then one more question about the tree removal. Again, we're going again by the consultant from the homeowner, right? There hasn't been any other independent verification of tree condition and removal.
That would be correct. Yes.
Is that need to be done independently by the city before that we can make a decision on the tree?
I I do not believe so. Roscoe, maybe you can chime in here. I just I would not believe so, no.
City doesn't have a tree removal permit program at this time. So the 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 tree in question, depending on the health currently, you know, there's there's no requirement. So that that may be ruled, but we have advised the applicant to unless absolutely necessary to preserve the tree as much as possible until until the design review permit has been approved. But should the conditions tree significantly worsen or require removal, then that's possibility.
Commissioner Del Negro?
To be clear, we are talking about a protected Monterey pine, correct? Right. Is there any dirt removal needed between the house on thirty Manzanita and forty Manzanita in order to make way for that additional garage to that side? There's any significant alteration of the existing slope?
I'm I'm not entirely sure. That's maybe a better question for the for the architect ones. Is he available?
And I think I saw Commissioner Quake.
My God. I lost my train of thought.
Okay, we'll give you a chance later.
I I was gonna say. Actually, I hate to say this, but years ago, we did have the opportunity to view ourselves what we are really seeing. We used to have two at a time people going to the premises that were being affected and and getting a real view. I mean, pictures, especially in today's environment, can be very deceiving. Once again, this house is probably the only one that doesn't have a second story. All the other ones have added on to. There's one picture in our packet that is Um, there's one picture in our packet that is. Very different and it's like an absolute view of the whole bay. Um, yeah, when I look at some of those, it's a little piece. Um, and views are, I know, extremely important when you have even a small view, you hate it taken away, but. Especially in today's environment where pictures can be. So deceiving, I mean. It it's tough that you don't have, as Commissioner Wong said, uh, an independent person. Um, taking some pictures and really viewing the view.
Okay, did you have any question or the comment came up? Any other questions? And and just to note, um, for people who aren't here, uh, who weren't here before, we. Uh, have not been doing that even before COVID. Um, it kind of became a policy where we stopped. Doing the site visits, but I um I agree with Commissioner Davis, add Commissioner Quay. I actually liked. Being able to go and see it in person, you know, exactly what we're talking about, but. Um, okay, why don't we go ahead and go on to the um applicant? We can let them speak and we can cover any other questions later. Do we have the applicant here?
Yes, I'm letting, I'm bringing them in as panelists right now.
Okay. Hello, uh, Mr. Kupamaki. Hi, welcome. Uh, if you want to go ahead and please add anything to the presentation, the stuff. And I think there was a question, oh, there was a question from Commissioner Del Negro regarding the dirt.
Yeah, I'll start with Commissioner Del Negro's uh question about the right side of the the east side of the house, that, yeah, we will be required to put about. Between three to four feet of a retaining wall. To support the dirt that's being taken out there for the house sidewalk to go around it. Um, if you see on the site plan, there's an existing shed that's there and it already. A. Pressure treated.
Have, if you can hold on for a second, let's get the site plan up so we can.
Yeah, uh, the existing site plan, yeah, that one. So there's a shed right there. And it has an existing pressure treated um retaining walls that's supporting that already. So we would either mock something like that or put in a concrete retaining wall for. For access around the house.
So the retaining wall would be that along that same line, the wood wall area or?
Right, yeah.
Because you're expanding it up.
Let me, I can measure it real quick. Yeah, so the edge of that shed, the very east side of it is twelve feet. So our house is going out ten feet plus we need a three foot walk. So about one more foot past that shed.
Okay, and anything else you'd like to add regarding the um project itself?
Yeah, I would just kind of like to go over. Just the overall project and the the background of it. Um. Uh, first off. My client is uh has a very family, so has needs for a larger house. Um. So when we started the project. We kind of were aware place to do these additions for this house. Um, to also. You know, construction budget without just ripping the whole thing down and starting from scratch. And when looking at the site plan, there's uh three different areas that seem appropriate for doing additions. One would be the right side of the of the house. Um, or towards the of the house. Um, which seems to be the easiest addition. So that's the reason why we picked that one and we can still leave all the existing foundation alone. Um, there was another option of filling in the left side. Um, which is a doable thing, but then we are left with no back usable yard. Um, because that is the only flat area. So we're hoping to keep that back area where the new pool is going to be a. A common rear yard for the client. There's also an option of going uh backwards, um, even potentially. Um, down the slope a little bit and put like a basement or something down there. That it would require quite a bit of excavation, retaining walls um in order to do something like that. So we skipped over that as that would be the most expensive route to do it all. Um. So when. When picking our our design, th- these are the options that we kind of went through at first to see. So we picked the doing addition off the right side and then adding a. Floor on top. Um. We worked with planning department a lot to kind of go over and make sure that we conform to all their zoning regulations. Setbacks, all the easements, just a lot had a lot of uh. Easements and other things going on with it. Um, and we wanted to make sure that we conform to all of those. Uh, and then regarding the second floor addition. There weren't really a lot of places at that point to to do a second story. I mean, we're doing a, we have this whole right side area. Um, of the addition of the first floor and we have certain setbacks and regulations that we have at that point, so. Uh, in order to to keep in the cheapest and easiest of construction, uh, that's where we put the second floor. Um. We didn't really know about the view concern until. I don't know, uh, talk with. Uh, our my client, she has all that information and has talked to the neighbors a bunch, but we did go over lots of view concerns uh with the neighbor across the street. And they did provide us those pictures and we kind of went through with the story polls and. Um. Kind of provided square footages of the views that they had. And uh showed them how we were going to be taking them and kind of went over options of. Of, you know, doing the addition on the left versus right and how we could escape not uh taking their view. And we we really kind of came down to the point of, I mean, even if we do a single story addition, we're going to take their view. If we go on the left side, we're going to take it. And so we kind of thought, hey, what if we give you a new view by potentially removing this tree? And. We had different calculations going back and forth, but from our calculations, um, that are on. On. The design options that are in the package on page thirty eight of the PDF. Um. We kind of show that. We're giving them pretty much the same size square footage view of what they had before. It's just a new view. Um, and then potentially even giving them more with uh setting a second floor back. Which wasn't our hopes and dreams because then everything's designed based off of room sizes and. We'd have to adjust room sizes and squish the design at that point. Um, so that's kind of the background of the the project, where we've started, how we've come to where we've gotten to at this point. And uh, kind of why we're having this discussion with you guys now to kind of see which direction you think we might need to go. Uh, to get approval from you.
Thank you. And is your client here as well available to speak or?
Uh, she is.
Would you? If she if she'd like to speak, would you like to speak? I don't.
Or is it Cindy and Tony?
Yeah, it's Cindy.
Okay, great.
Um, I'm. We can let them in and hear from them as well and then we can get questions. Hello, welcome, um, Cindy and Tony, I'm sorry, Mr. Smith's problem. Hello, welcome. Um, did you want to add anything on to that, what your um? Climate measurement and and he did mention that you had a little more information regarding the uh conversations with the neighbors?
Yes, uh, yes. So first, good evening, commissioners, planning department. Thanks again for the opportunity for us to. Kind of uh present our situation and our and the building of our home. Uh, first, I kind of want to give you a little background of why I have to build such a significantly large home. Um, we are a blended family. Um, I have. Two kids of my own, he has two kids of his own. And so then, um, I also have a brother. His fiance, new baby on the way. So all in all, we're going to have about close to nine people that are going to be living in this house. And um, of course, hopefully then when the teenagers move out, uh. Most likely, we'll probably have to move my parents in because my father has cancer, so. We're doing all that we can to try to provide a living position. So that way, you know, in the the overall, we're all comfortable. I mean, because due to COVID, obviously, you know, we currently live in San Francisco and we do have a three story. Town home, but even with that, it's very cramped and we have. You know, these kids that are growing. So that's why we decided we. Decided during COVID to actually look for a home and possibly build it to accommodate the large family that we have. Um, so as we were designing our home, um, once I realized. That uh I had an opposing neighbor with the view. Obviously, I did reach out to her. We did try to do, I reached out to her main, we worked with her for about three to four months to try to really get it. To try to work with whatever I could to to to, you know, make everyone happy because I don't want to move into the neighborhood and. And have a bunch of angry neighbors. So I did work with the neighbor next to me. We did work with the neighbor across and neighbor to my. The other side was okay with it. Uh, so I worked with both neighbors for months, just trying to figure out. So with the neighbor with the privacy concern, I. I put out everything. I even suggested eight foot fence, a lattice, grow some trees. I did all of that. Um, we went back and forth and ultimately they just, uh, they kind of just ghosted the email. They never, they just stopped contacting me. For some reason, I don't know. And then the neighbor across, uh, you know, we did try. I I did come up with some ideas and try to really work with her to see, you know, we can find her solution. I even offered to. Although I didn't want to chop down a tree, but I figured, okay, what can I really do? Because no matter what I do, the view is from the top of my roof. And it's a, and so however I will build, I am going to affect her view. So I figured if I maybe take a tree down, I even offer to even. Take some branches off of the neighbors because there's a twin, they're twin trees. There's one big tree. That's in my yard and there's another large tree. They're called twin trees on the neighbor on thirty man Sanita. So I said, you know, if you like, you can talk to the neighbor. I can even trim down her branches. And possibly give you this, you know, another view. Um, so it didn't go well because, um, you know, they then, when I did the story poll for them. They asked for all the stuff and I did give them what they wanted. And at the very end, they just weren't happy with the size of the view that they feel that they were getting. Um, you know, obviously, I think they really want the same view, but. You know, being is that I'm building a home to accommodate my family. I wouldn't be able to give her the exact view that she has. So, um, so I did do all of that to try to really work with the neighbor and really try to meet in the middle. But even at that, with all the suggestions with remove the tree, even removing. The branches from the neighbor's tree, um, they still didn't, um, they still weren't satisfied with it. So that's when, you know, now we're at this position where, um, I don't know what else to do to possibly give this neighbor their view. So that that's where we're at, not the position that we're at today. And of course, you know, I I. I am working with them, but I I can only do so much in terms of my side too, I guess.
Okay, well, thank you very much. And do we have any um questions of the applicants, either the architect or the owners? Any of the commissioners have questions? Commissioner Del Negro?
Can you clarify what the actual square footage of the planned build is? What was the actual square footage?
Actual square footage of the whole home?
Of the whole home.
One second, the actual square footage will be four thousand five hundred and thirty five square feet. That is not, that is not including the. When you have a plus nine foot ceiling, they increase the FAR number. So this is the actual square footage without that.
Four, uh, sorry, four thousand five hundred and.
Thirty five.
Thirty five. And that is due to the ceiling heights being higher than the ninety. Um. Okay, any other questions? Commissioner Wong.
Um, so the issue is about the loss of the view within the building height and, you know. Uh, it's really great to have a project, upgrade your home, all for that. Um, but the the heights of the ceilings on the first and the second floor, they are. Uh, very high, they're ten feet high ceilings, twenty feet high, uh, open ceiling in the. Uh, near the entrance, um, in the first room that we enter. Uh, so has there been given more thoughts about? Uh, the style of the home with the flat roof to try to minimize that height? I know that uh we always talk about and every city has, you know, try to keep the home and the remodels within the character of the neighborhood. But you know, that doesn't mean that we have to redesign the homes to match, you know, fifty year old homes and the styles. So. If we have a more modern design with the flat roof, have you given that any thought and could that possibly? Lower the height of the building and also instead of having straight, you know, ten foot high ceilings, maybe have recessed ceiling so you can have a pattern. On the ceiling which recessed and and uh reduce the the height a bit that way without having the gables and so forth to need to be so high.
Uh, well, we were told by planning that the flat roof is frowned upon. So we initially, if you saw our proposed. Drawing or rendering, there it was with the flat roof. And we were told not to have a flat roof because it didn't go with the aesthetics of the neighborhood. Um, in purposes of the ten foot ceiling, I mean, you know. I guess what I can say is, I, you know, what I've lived in in San Francisco and in previous home before. I'm used to the ten foot ceiling, right? So it doesn't give me that claustrophobic feel. So, you know. I mean, I'm building a brand new home and I, so potentially our retirement home, we live in Millbrae forever. So we want something that would fit our comfort zone too. Um, so, but we did, we did first, um, put in the flat, flat roof. That was our first initial design. But we were told not to not to build that way and we had to put the pitched roof.
Also add on that, and would that uh, would that have lowered the height of the building?
Um, yes, but I don't think it would affect her view though, even if I were to lower eight feet. I mean, even if I built a single story home, it would still affect her view.
So Esther, Esther, if you can show the slide that you had of the front elevation rendering with the eight foot. It still has the pitched roof, but you can see that the fascia. On that would still be over the East Bay hills, so. Uh, you can see the horizontal fascia right above the door. So this is with an eight foot first and second plate height. And then the four and twelve roof. That fascia would be a little bit lower just from the pitch, so. You know, that might be a a tiny bit higher, but that's probably kind of representative of where a flat roof height would be with eight foot top and bottom.
Uh, Commissioner Quay.
Did I see one of um the renderings where you added to the other side? Of the living room, I guess, did you go over to the other side? Uh, what is the possibility of going over that side rather than the view side?
Um, we do have a rendering of that. It wasn't in the presentation, but we did provide one at that point. Um, there was. A couple of things that came up on it. One, this, if we were to not intrude on the rear. Site area where the pool in the backyard is, that's the flat usable area, then we wouldn't have enough space for the the house that we need. Um, for all the bedrooms and living space. Um. And then if we were to also. Have the second story on the left side. Keep the house where it is and then do a the single story addition again, we are then again taking the square footage or taking the view. Uh, due to that single story addition. Um, there, I mean, there is an option that is cost effective or not cost effective, very costly, and that would be to demo. The rear of the house, demo that foundation, build a new foundation on the left side and then build up from there. Um, pretty cost, pretty costly to do something like that.
Does that going to affect the pool area?
Well, then that would then put the pool on the right side instead of or east side.
Oh.
Instead, so we just flip flop everything, but there'd be some serious demo going.
Just building above the addition on the other side.
On the left, on the left side?
Yeah, when you're looking at the house on the left side. Aren't you moving out so many feet there?
That is correct. So based off of?
Eight are those.
So that, that area, are you talking about the area that's open to above, like the front area?
No. I thought it, well, I guess it could. Yeah, part of it, my, yes, I'm looking at a lot of pictures here now.
Commissioner Quigg, are you referring to the photo where they had a little bit of left? Yeah, some of the left extension, maybe, um, either Nestor, Roscoe, if you can put up the, that?
Had the some?
Addition to the left or, yes. I think it was attachment eight, but some.
It, it's not as big as I had it. Can we go back to that one?
Yeah, let me pull it up real quick, just.
I think that was beautiful. Unfortunately, um, there we go with, you did a wonderful design.
Thank you.
Are important. I don't know. Yeah, that piece over here, how large is that piece on the left?
So that left side, let me add it in AutoCAD right here, is about three hundred and sixty square feet.
Okay.
And that is, the reason it's so small is because of the setback requirements.
On the side.
On the side, yeah.
I think it would be very important for someone else to take a look from across the street to really see, I know it might be small and I know no matter how small are important, but you're actually building your house. And, and do you have one without the tree? Do you have a view without the tree?
No, we didn't superimpose or Photoshop that.
I know nowadays pictures are photoshopped and superimposed and, um, years ago, we had so much information and when the commissioners actually went into the house, we thought, oh my God, this poor man's view is going to all be gone. Uh, and, and I think sometimes that's lost the way it's being handled correctly or incorrectly right now or the way it has to be. And I, I really don't see, I mean, yeah, you can add another three hundred square feet above that little addition, but that wouldn't really protect the view supposedly that's going to go to the bay.
Um.
That's my comments.
May I just add that? So if you look at the original photo that was sent to, to us, uh, I think that would be um, the one that is on attachment.
I believe it's attachment six.
Six, the original photo, right? Yeah, that one. So I don't know which angle that was taken from her rumpus room. But then if you look at the very bottom last photo, um, after they requested it, I do a post-study for them. And then they then retook the picture. If you look at the very last photo, they retook the picture. And, um, as you can see, I don't know if they angled the photo or their camera downward or where it was originate, where they actually can see the view from the rumpus room. But as you can see, it's two different views. So I'm, that's where I'm kind of like, okay. When I asked her for the view photo initially, she sent me the one, the original one, again, it was very angled. And then when I put the story poles and then they decided to do their own analysis of what kind of view they were losing or whatnot, they sent in that photo. Um, because I can't go into their house and take a photo. So they did their own picture again with the story pole. And as you can see now, the view, you can't see the top of my roof anymore. It's now flat. So I don't know if that's their true view that they're really seeing.
Yeah. So I think that we can, we can, maybe if the neighbors are here, we can wait to hear from them directly. Um, and I'd like to just go into if we have any other questions from the commissioners or the applicants. If not, I, I think we do have members of the public wishing to speak. So I'd like to open it up to them. So any other questions from the commissioners at this time? Nope. Okay. So if we can go ahead and open up to public comment, I believe we have a few. So, um, and just to note for the public, we do have, give everyone the three minutes to speak. So please keep your comments concise, but we, we are looking for your feedback as well.
First, um, is Maura. Maura, if you'll come off mute.
Welcome, Maura.
Hi there. Um, my name is Maura Laberan Shea, um, and I live at twenty-five Manzanita Court, um, across the street. And we've all been talking a lot about the view from our upstairs living room, um, which is a, a room that we spend quite a lot of time in because it's the room in our house that has a view. Um, so to clarify, uh, about the, um, angle of the photos, I believe, although I wasn't the one who took both photos, um, I don't have a study at hand. So I believe that when I took the second photo, I had the camera on the windowsill. Whereas, um, my husband probably was at standing height. Um, he has a steadier hand than I do to take photos. So that's, I guess, the only alteration I can, or information I can provide on that. Um, I also want to know that there are, I feel are some misrepresentations um, in the, um, information that you've received so far. Um, including stated in the planning commission agenda report as well as, um, by our neighbor. Um, in the report, which I saw yesterday, um, the architect stated that, quote, "The neighbors of twenty-five Manzanita have shown that they disapprove the design. Although we've shown them that no matter what addition location we do, we will be altering their view," end quote. Um, you know, we've communicated in good faith multiple times with our neighbors. Um, we submitted our consultation form in November. We didn't hear from them until May. And all along, we've been urging them to consider an array of design options, including questions that have come up already tonight during this meeting. Um, to find an option that would lessen, although not necessarily eliminate the impact on our view from the upstairs living room. Um, you know, we don't want to be overly prescriptive. They're the homeowner. They have design preferences and we want to honor that. Um, and the goal really, as we've stated to them multiple times, is simply to find a workable compromise. Um, and I thought we were getting there because in June, we spoke to them on, on Zoom on June thirteenth. And we talked about the story pole study, um, around cutting the tree to see if that would help. Um, we're open to it. Um, but we did ask them if we found that cutting the tree didn't restore enough view based on the story pole study, whether they would be willing to explore increasing the second story setback by a few more feet. Um, they said it would be difficult emotionally, but they were open to it. Um, and from our perspective, that seemed like a great place to be in because we were finally actually collaborating. That was our goal the whole time. Um, second, the report states that the applicant provided a series of options to address few concerns. Um, in fact, the only option they ever offered was cutting the tree. And that's it. Everything else is new to us as of yesterday. So I hope that the planning commission can encourage forty Manzanita to do a collaborative problem-solving solution. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, and do we have others?
Um, yes, Taiken, if you can come off mute.
Yes, hello. Good morning. My name is Taiken Shea. I live at twenty-five, um, Manzanita Court. Good evening, Chair Joe and planning commissioners. Um, so, uh, I'd just like to make two points. Uh, first is throughout this process, we have been uh, clear with our neighbors at forty Manzanita that a severe reduction in our view of the bay from our upstairs living room would decrease our enjoyment of our home as well as our home's property value. And while we have been open to designs that might alter our view, but just not significantly decrease the area, up to this point, our neighbors have not shown us any willingness to alter their original design that lessens its impact on us other than cutting down a diseased pine tree that needs to be moved anyway. So how are we supposed to approve a project that has such a negative impact on us without even a gesture of actual accommodation or compromise on their part? Uh, second, regarding the proposal to remove the diseased pine tree, um, if, if we could, uh, take a look at attachment twelve, please. This, uh, this detachment il- illustrates the project's impact on our view if the designed pine, uh, diseased pine tree were removed, but no changes were made to the proposed building. Uh, I would just want to point out some inaccuracies in the square foot area calculations by the architect here, which underest- underestimate the project's impact on our view. Uh, my own annotations are in bright colors and the architects are colored peach. So number one, I've outlined in green what we consider to be the view that we enjoy currently. The architect's calculation of square footage of existing view in colored peach underestimates the actual view area, uh, to a fraction of our actual current view. Number two, the top of the mountain line drawn by the architect is inaccurate. But the architect labeled is actually the top of the fog above the mountains rather than the top of the mountains. The result of this extrapolation of this line is that the proposed view square footage is drastically overestimated. Number three, the result of these inaccuracies is both the under-calculation um, of our existing view and the overestimation of the proposed view. From these inaccurate assumptions, the architect calculates that the existing house plan with the pine tree removed would result in only a small decrease in our view area. But I stand by my calculations that cutting down the pine tree without changes to the house design would result in an eighty to ninety percent decrease in our view area as seen in the red, um, outlined area. Thus, we feel that removing the pine tree alone is insufficient for preserving the square footage of our view. I would also like to point out finally that the photo, the view of the bay photo provided by our neighbors is a, uh, vast misrepresentation of what our view would be. Um, in fact, um, Mount Diablo is far to the right. There's a little window of, uh, space next to the pine tree where you can see the, uh, control tower of the airport. But, um, Mount Diablo is far to the right. So, um, that would be, uh, a view that they have that, uh, that's certainly not what we have. Um, the, so the, the very first time, you know, we learned of?
I'm sorry, Mr. Shea. We, we're going to need to have you, um, wrap up because we do have the three minutes up, but. Just a closing statement, if you, if you want, we'll give you that, but.
Okay, thank you. I'll be quick. So, uh, the very first time we learned of an additional option to the three-fourth, uh, three-foot second-story setback was in reviewing the agenda documents for this, uh, planning commission meeting. So in contrast to the applicant's claims, these options were never, these other options were never previously, uh, provided to us directly. We would just respond that the removal of the pine tree plus the additional three-foot second-story setback may bring us much closer to an acceptable compromise to which we may be able to give our support. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Um, do we have other members?
Margaret Ng. If you'll come off mute.
It's Miss Ng. You'd like to come off mute and go ahead and comment? Hello?
Hi commissioners, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Welcome. Yeah, uh, I'm at Labor on Sebastian Drive. Property owner, as you know, property owners in the Mills estate area in which this property belongs to is all about their views. To accommodate this, I encourage our city to allow residents building more high-end quality contemporary design homes with flat roofs. As this feature really help open up more views for immediate neighbors, yet still achieving higher ceiling height for those homeowners who wish to build a high-quality home. We do live in a contemporary time and we expect more contemporary home. So I hope my comments will can, kind of help this homeowners in the area who's in trying to reconcile each other's need will be able to help, uh, the homeowners. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And do we have, uh, any others wishing to speak?
Yes, um, Jane Huang and Tony Lee. If you'll come off mute.
I don't see them in here.
Yes, um, Jane, are you still there? Jane or Tony?
Jane and Tony. I believe they're not muted. So if you?
Jane and Tony, do you still wish to speak?
I think they have, they may have some audio issues, so maybe we can try again. So why don't we maybe go to a next, if there's another person and then we can still give them a chance.
Um, that is the last hand.
Oh, that is the last one. Okay. Um, so Jane and Tony, if you have a way to, it seems like you're trying to unmute. Yes, we're hearing now.
Perfect. Sorry about that. Um, hi, my name's Lee, um, and here with my wife, Jane Huang. We are the neighbors on the west side of the property on, uh, thirty Manzanita Court. Um, and so, uh, I think for us, we did have some privacy concerns early on, um, on the side of the house that they are building. Uh, we actually have, uh, uh, five different rooms there, including a guest room, two bathrooms, uh, our master bedroom, as well as our children's room. Um, so there is, there is quite a bit of, uh, windows on that side. Currently, because of the way the house is situated, uh, we're actually, um, at an elevated, elevated position. So all the windows have a clearer view of all our sky, uh, all the skies in all those windows. Um, looking at the new plans, um, that's actually going to block the view of all those and, and, and the windows that they had um, actually have a direct line of sight into all, all the rooms now that they're going to be adding a second-story addition. Um, in our conversations together, you know, we did, we did, uh, express our concerns around the, uh, the view and, uh, the possibility of having a fence. Um, and I, as I understand it, uh, the, uh, uh, that the city requires, uh, no, no more than an eight-foot fence. So, um, I think that could alleviate some concerns just around, uh, the, uh, privacy concerns, um, which I think would make a really big difference. Um, and I believe they actually had made some adjustments to the heights of their windows as well, which would also eliminate some of those concerns. So, um, you know, we do appreciate that. Uh, you know, in terms of, you know, the view otherwise, um, you know, it is great right now that we have blue skies in every single window on that side. Uh, we do understand that they are, you know, building a big home for a large family. Um, you know, if there is a possibility, uh, to lowering the size of the roofs to make it a flatter roof, um, you know, that, I think that would be welcome for us as well. I think we wouldn't have any issues with that. Um, and, uh, also echoing, uh, Commissioner Wong's, uh, concern about the height of the building as well, the, the height of the, the rooms being ten-foot tall. Um, you know, if there is any consideration about a possible lowering those, I mean, even though they have a large family, um, you know, the, uh, the height of that was brought down. I mean, I think that would, uh, certainly, uh, help us, uh, you know, be, 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 be more in favor of the proposed plan. Um, and so that would, that would make a difference for us.
Okay, thank you very much. And I believe that, is that the last that we have of the public comment?
Correct. That was the last hand.
Okay. So, uh, can we have a vote to close public comment? A motion from Commissioner Quigg and do we have a second? Commissioner Wong, second. So vote to, can we have a vote?
Commissioner Del Negro?
Yes.
Commissioner Wong?
Yes.
Commissioner Quigg?
Yes.
Vice Chair Davis?
Yes.
And Chair Joe?
Yes. Um, and why don't we, I guess maybe, I don't know if we needed to use public comment, but, um, give the applicant a chance to answer if you'd like, an opportunity to answer some of the issues. Um, just to note again, this is just a study session. So we're not making any decisions today and we're trying to figure out a good way to resolve this for everybody. So, um, I think there's a lot of, we don't want to get too much into a back and forth. I think we try to keep things constructive as much as we can. So did, uh, would you like to speak?
Yeah, on response to Maura's, um, comments that we didn't inform her, I did do a, a, a packet of all the information that was communicated between her and I via email and whatnot. So there's some of it in those emails will indicate that there was information that I did uh, tell her, you know, why we couldn't build, if we built it one story or we went this route or that route. Um, some of the emails do indicate that I have informed her about that. Um, some of the emails do indicate that I have informed her about that. Um, so you can look through the packet, I'm, I don't know.
I don't think that's so much of a concern to all of us, as I mean, it is nice to know, but um, I think. I just, I think going down the trail of, you know, who said what to whom is not productive, so I think in terms of. Any of the issues, I think would be better to keep.
Okay, um, I just want to say, you know, like I said, like Millbrae. I've grew up in the suburbs, my husband's from the city. Now that we have a blended family and we have so many, you know, we have. Three little ones that are coming out, we definitely, of course, want to live in a Millbrae, we, but like I said, we really want to live in an area. Where that's why we bought the house because it has a a little bit of a backyard for the kids to play safely in. Um, I purposely bought the house because of the cul-de-sac that it's in. And before I even purchased the house, I wanted to make sure the neighborhood had. Two-story homes so that I'm not just going in and building a robust home in the cul-de-sac. Um, in that cul-de-sac alone, there's two very large homes, Mediterranean style homes there, so I. Myself did do my, you know, consideration of that before I went and just decided, hey, I'm just going to go in the neighborhood and do that. Um, so with that said, that's why I figured, okay, well, maybe at this point, you know, I could purchase a home and build something that would be. Comfortable and suitable for all these people that I'm going to be housing. I'm the eldest of seven, so I've taken care of people all my life, so it's not a big thing for me to live with a lot of people. But of course, I still want to live comfortably and that's what it is. It's, I'm building a home so that. My, you know, all my kids can grow up in and eventually I could take care of my folks too. Um, so that that's what it is, and I'm hoping that the commissioners do understand that. Yes, you know, we're we're in the mo- Calif- San Francisco and California or the peninsula loan is so expensive. We kind of almost have to live together to help each other out before we can expand, so. That's kind of where we're at, but thank you for listening to our position and our proposal.
Okay, um, let's go ahead and open it up to Commissioner comments and um. Discussion, I guess, in terms of how to go with this, we'd like to start. Commissioner Wong?
Okay, I'll go ahead. Looks like a great project. I understand the needs for growing family and uh. You have every right to modernize and update your home and looking forward to you. Finding the solution that will satisfy yourself and the neighbors somehow. In this process, you know, this is why we moved to Millbrae, why we are part of this pilot process. And the neighbors, eventually when you build this house, you know, you're gonna raise your. Family with the neighbors and you know, they will school together, you'll have block parties, it'll be great. Um, but somehow uh, for this compromise, we do need to have independent um. Pictures and perspectives and I noticed that on both both ends of the. Pictures provided either by the owner or by the neighbors, uh, yeah, they they both have criticisms of each of the perspectives. So we need staff or planning commission to be able to look at these uh photographs and perspectives and try to. See what the compromise and how we can find the best solution that will meet everybody's needs. Even in the architect's drawings, when they have the pictures provided by neighbors and do the renderings, it doesn't have the same perspective. Looking from the right perspective that the house rendering, it's like, kind of like just a profile, street profile of the house. It doesn't have that profile view of that drawing, so I can't really make. Get a clear what's going on based on these drawings. Uh, we need to. You know, make some compromises into the height, again, really encourage the staff to look at alternatives like a modern. Uh, style design, the house, you know, if these houses were built like seventies, sixties, seventies, probably fifty, sixty years old. You know, it would benefit the neighborhood, it would benefit the community and the homeowners to have a modern design. And that would, you know, make our neighborhoods more attractive. You know, we don't want to completely design and keep in character with homes that are. Sixty years old, but if we incorporate more modern elements, there's still ways to. Keep it in character with the neighborhood in terms of size, massing, scale. Um, and so forth. You see this in other big cities like San Francisco, you have old Victorians next to a modern design. But somehow they all, they fit together because of the scale and the massing and the sizing. So we should really consider that, and especially in this case, if it allows to provide a lower uh roof. The tree issue alone is a big concern, uh, because again, uh, need independent verification that there is an issue. Um, you know, the tree two and the tree nine are both said to have same issues. But tree two is called out that it may not survive the construction process and, you know, if you do any. Uh, any type of construction uh in proximity to a tree or a design, it may impact. Uh, the tree and the health of the tree, so I mean, if the construction was close enough to tree nine, they might have the same problem. So that tree issue alone was, is that you need to work, is that going to halt the entire construction process? Process if it needs to stay, or what is the city willing to do to compromise? If that tree is taken out, is there homeowner concessions or uh kickbacks in lieu of. Taking out an older growth tree, that tree, you know, could, that tree is what pretty much makes the character of the neighborhood. Uh, you know, the the key to city design is try to keep uh design within the key. Natural features in the environment, so that tree, you know, provides, you know, shade, wind shelter. Uh, noise abatement maybe from the airport, you know, it it does provide a lot of benefits and taking out that and having a single tree, you know, how. How would that look? I'm not sure that would. Make it look any better at all. Uh, good tree trimming would be good, so uh, just. In general, I'd like to see more, explore more design options and compromise and make sure that we. Try to get to that point where we have a solution that works both for the homeowner and for the neighbors.
Okay. And the other commissioners?
I can make sure quick. Yeah, I might as well make just a couple of comments. Um, these are always extremely difficult situations and. Everyone has to realize that nobody is going to be happy uh at the end. And so. I would just encourage um, maybe. Shrink the house a little bit on that side. I am always in favor of uh situations with views in. Making some exceptions on setbacks. Uh, in order to preserve someone's view. However, once again, I have no idea what view the people across the street are losing. Uh, I'm looking at pictures. But once again, years ago, you could say pictures are worth a thousand words, but no longer is that the case. Um, the fact that a picture was taken from a sill, how high is that sill? Do you have to be near the window to see the view or can you see it from? Eight feet back so that when you're walking around the room, you see the view? So views are subjective. And um, unfortunately, in this times, views are not protected. But once again, I I think that as Cindy Tong had said. You're adding on and you don't want to be moving into a neighborhood that everyone's going to hate you. So I would just recommend that you continue to work together. Uh, and see if you can allow a little bit of you, but like, like I say. I have no idea what view they're gonna lose. Based on the pictures I have seen and um, the. The drawings that are superimposed, it's hard to tell. That's my comments, and like I say. There's always going to be somebody that's not going to be happy. I've been doing this a long time. Got to do the best you can.
Okay, Commissioner. You're not muted, where Commissioner Davis want to talk? Commissioner Davis?
First, thanks everybody for getting us to this point. Obviously, there's been a lot of work going on between the neighbors and the staff and everything, so thank you. Um, I want to say something upfront. And just to remind us that we have a set of guidelines. And this project currently meets them all, except maybe the view. But it. People who live in Millbrae or are considering living in Millbrae do have to be able to rely on our guidelines. So I just want to put that out there, that. There are rules, if we can't rely on them and trust on them to know what I might be able to do with my home. It makes life much harder on all of us. I just wanted to remind us of that. We do need a better representation of that view. Because the best picture I saw, I would call it a peek-a-boo view. It it's not a massive hundred and eighty degree, you know, view, it's it's a small view. And but I don't even know, like, like Kathy has said and and Alan has said, we don't really know exactly what that view is, we need a better representation of it. Um, so, because without real data, it's very hard for us to decide whether we're destroying a view or not, right? I mean, it's just really, really hard to know. Um. Cost has been brought up a few times. And as I've understood it, I'm not, I don't think the planning commission is supposed to involve ourselves too much with the cost. For example, of shifting the building to the left and using, having to build new foundation and demo the the foundation on the right. But I I would level a little guidance on that, but if anybody's ever going to bring up costs, maybe some rough numbers of it increases the. Cost of the project by twenty percent or fifty percent might be helpful you information for any of us, I'm not sure. Um. I would, if we can't have it for this project, in the future, I'd love to know what exactly we're considering. Um, principal rooms are when it's considering a view. Um, this room has been described as the upstairs living room, I don't know if that means there's a downstairs living room too. Or if a house has, you know, a living room, a family room, another room off to the side. How many rooms are we counting as principal rooms? I don't know, but moving forward to be better if we had a good handle on that. Um, and again, going back to just having good data, we've, we've heard arguments that lowering the ceiling heights may not do anything. We've heard that, that putting a one, somehow adding it on as a single story. Building will also not improve the view, but since we don't exactly know what that view is. But better data to know if, will reducing the ceiling heights make a difference or not? It's hard to tell, I can't tell. So I just feel like we need some more data here to really help. Um, I know you guys all want to get along, I know you're all going to be fabulous neighbors soon, you know, hanging out together, but um. I guess there's some more information that needs to be shared. And one same with that, one more comment, you. I've asked you to go back to slightly more traditional in some of its elements, but some are arguing maybe we should go more modern with flat roofs.
Commissioner Davis?
Oh, sorry.
You froze for a little bit, so just finish that first.
Okay, so one more little, one more little note here. Some have argued that maybe we need to go to a flat roof and a more modern design. The applicants originally came in with a more modern design and our staff asked them to move to some more traditional elements to make it blend with the neighborhood. Better, so. It, before we tell them to go backwards to where they came, I guess we need to know also if flat roofs make any darn difference here at all. So I'm not sure if I helped do anything, but that's it.
All right, Commissioner Del Negro, you solved the problem, whereas.
Well, um, first of all, it's a very good looking design. I do like the way the house looks. Um, I commend obviously the architect for the 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 character of the house. Um, and working with city staff, I do um commend also that action. And of course, I can appreciate obviously the growing family, the desire to have the space um for the family. I do view that this house and the design build is an extremely aggressive build as far as the size and impact. If you look at the thirteen houses that are on that street, only four of the houses are two stories. And this would be the largest of all the houses on that street. Um, in fact, the nearest house is a hundred and thirty, about hundred and twenty-five square foot smaller than this house. Um, and there's only two houses that are in the four thousand square foot range on your block. So this will be the largest house on the block, um, and it is very aggressive in its size. Um, you have doubled the square footage, you've tripled the far ratio. Um, and you've covered the lot by two and a quarter times by my calculations of of an increase. Um, and of course, the ceiling heights being ten foot each. I mean, just it masses up to sounding like you're just trying to get as large as you can on the project. In fact, it almost appears to me that you've on the west, I'm sorry, on the east side towards the hill slope. Gone as far as you possibly can due to not necessarily impacting your impacting your neighbor, but that's where the hill slope. Um, coming down is limited on how far you can go. So to me, it feels like what you really, you know, want is as much as you can out of the space. Um. And that concerns me a little bit, um, but you know, you have a right to build within the scope and the design of what is allowable. It just appears that you're trying to get a lot, even on these ten foot heights of the ceiling. I will agree, obviously with um, Commissioner Davis, that, you know, flat roof is out of character with Millbrae and um, we should not be considered as a design. Um, and I don't believe it would actually help with recovering the neighbor's view that you're taking away. See, um. I am highly concerned about the removal of the tree. Um, you did say it's a twin tree, you remove one twin, usually it'll end up damaging or impacting the second twin. Um, that would be a concern that you're actually going to make the inhibit or negatively affect the neighbor's tree as well as take out a protected species. Um, I have worked on the Parks and Rec Commission, I've worked on arborists, I've met many arborists. Um, I'm aware that you can find an arborist who will tell you a diseased tree is diseased even when they're not. Um, I would definitely say you need to get an opinion that's validated by the city to claim that that tree is diseased and go forward with such a path. But overall, um, you know, you are in the guidelines, um, I am highly concerned, obviously, with the optics of the size and the impact on the neighborhood. I'll leave it at that. Oh, I would last one, one last piece, um. I still haven't seen the easement concerns on the rear of the house. I know there's a rear garden down below, that there's a slope down below, but I still have not been presented where that easement is. And what are those limitations towards the back of the house? You have told me you are moving dirt, you are actually changing the slope on the. Uh, sorry, the east side of the house, but you're concerned about moving the slope on the um. The rear of the house, uh, those two things are kind of a little incompatible. Um, and um, the same time, you're also arguing about not having to increase the foundation. But you are adding a lot of foundational space on the first floor in the current design, you're not just using the existing foundation. You are already changing it, just leaving up the front wall. So, you know, some of these things don't necessarily add up on the optics of the project to some of the claims about rational reasons why you don't want to do A, B, or C. Um, I've come back obviously with a little bit more detail and justification on some of those things as Commissioner Davis said for the cost issues.
Thank you, and um, did Steph, did you, did you have that available, the easement information, I think? I mean, there was the topo map and all of that, maybe you can, we can just go over that really quick.
Yeah, I I believe um, David might have had a a graphic, um, the project architect, so they kind of showed the the space. Let me see if I can find it, um, just give me one second.
Yeah, if we can do that without delay.
And and if you have it available, David, that um, quicker than than I do, that'd be great as well.
Might be a zero point one.
Just to be clear, Commissioner Del Negro, you're talking about the rear and the utility easement and the sloping in the back.
Yeah, I I I didn't really, wasn't clear to me in the packet where the, how far that easement was.
So if we can show that on the site plan, I think.
Looks like page fifteen of the PDF.
We have that?
Sorry, I'm I'm I just sharing the screen right now. So we we did receive this graphic um, from the project architect. Um, and I don't know if you want to speak uh to it a little bit more, David. But it kind of shows the the sloped area, the developable area, and I'm not sure how how much you can read it at this point, if it's too kind of far.
Uh, I actually got that up on my screen, so I can read it, yeah, so it shows the different areas. Um, there's a line near the back that's going diagonally and it says edge of P U E perv, yeah, that line right there. So that is the edge of the easement and it hits all property lines going. So that is the edge of the easement, and it hits all property lines going backwards. Now that line that's kind of below it going left to right, that's the rear one-third property line. And then you can see the topography kind of laid over this where there's kind of that really steep area. It's also in like a squared blue pattern. Was that what you were looking for?
To be clear, that the area in this photograph that is not striped with, with a, a blue lines across it is a buildable area. It's in the range of the house.
And it's correct.
There is still a lot you could do at the rear of this house as far as building. And obviously, the concern here balances cost to build, which I haven't actually seen any necessarily hand, I've seen hand waving about any numbers that, that really can convey that point.
Okay, okay. So I, I would just, I think this thing with modern design, I I've been okay with having some contemporary design mixed in, I, with others. But I feel for staff, because I think staff's direction has been, when, when we have contemporary design, it gets sent back. So I, I think, you know, that is why it started in the first place. So that might be something that at some future time, I know we've talked about having more specific design review guidelines, that would be helpful. Because I think that it makes it difficult for everyone all around if, you know, they propose something modern and then the staff under, you know, direction of what they think we want is not modern. And then it gets redone, and then to come to a commissioner meeting and be told, no, why don't you consider modern? It's a little bit, I can see how that could be really frustrating. So at this point, we don't really have a, a directive, a direct directive on that, clear directive in terms of, do we want the modern or not? Are we okay with a contemporary design in a, you know, in a neighborhood where it's not necessarily all the case? Personally, I think it's, it can be done where you can have a mix and, you know, we don't have to have everything that's exactly like the others. But, you know, it's, it's a difficult question. In terms of, I'm not sure how to resolve this thing with the pictures, because I know that's come up a few times, but I'm not really sure how we do that short of is, is that something that staff can do that, to actually go into the house and, you know, where do you take a picture from? I mean, I've had times when I've done a site visit and I've actually had somebody say, oh, you need to stand, come to this corner and look out at that angle. And it's when you're standing up that you see the view. And I'm like, I, I would never be standing in that room and looking at the view at that, you know, I wouldn't be sitting at the windowsill necessarily. So I think that's a difficult one as well. I'm not sure if, is there something that we can do in terms of the staff?
To answer your question, Chair Joe, we, we could work with the, with the neighbor to see if we can take, take a photo. I think that would verify. I, I think really the, the concern is when, when this first started, I think we have to just understand that when, when this whole thing started, we were a lot deeper into the pandemic. And so the concern that staff had was going into private property, especially someone's home, given, given the sensitivity with, with the pandemic. So I think that, that's really what was the concern there.
Okay, thank you. So, I mean, because of what I'm hearing from everybody is that, you know, they would like more information, more, you know, clear guidance in terms of the principal rooms, you know, is this really a principal view that we're talking about? How much of you are, are we talking about? And I, I, I do agree with Commissioner Del Negro in terms of it feels very big to me. So if there's a way to I, and I know it's within the guidelines, but I think if there's a way to soften the feel a bit, or, you know, maybe consider the moving, moving it a little more to the left to help alleviate. I, I don't think that a flat roof is gonna make much of a difference. I mean, it almost seems like even a first floor extension isn't, isn't gonna make a huge difference in terms of the view, but I don't know if a modern style will, in this case, make that much of a difference, but maybe to work on it a little bit more and to, when it does come back, have more information available for, for the planning commission to make a good decision.
So, but if I may, just to kind of summarize what I've heard, and I think Commissioner Davis has some comments as well. Correct me if I'm wrong, I, just generally, the, the consensus that I've heard from the commission tonight is that and, and the direction is to explore different options or towards a compromise. Recommend working with the applicants and the, and the neighbor and, and provide more information that, that, that may be a little bit confusing from the information that we have today. So staff will go out and try to obtain a photo, verify some of the superimposed pictures and then see if, if lowering the plate heights and if that would do anything to, to restore the view. But I think generally, the consensus is that working with the neighbor to, to achieve some sort of compromise, that, that maybe include a little bit further step back on the upper, sorry, on the, on the right side. And also possibly with that tree removal as well.
Right, to get more information regarding the tree as, as well.
More, more information regarding that, that tree.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's hard to make, as Commissioner Quick said, it's, this is a difficult, this is always difficult to, to work on, but it's, it's more difficult because we don't, we feel like we don't have the complete information that we need. So, Commissioner Davis?
I just forgot to say one thing. The rendering that's in front of us is stunning. It is a beautiful design, the, from the original that we saw in the presentation to this. It, it's gorgeous. I just forgot to say that. I wanted to say that.
And, and, yep, so I think that's it. Do we have any other? I mean, we don't need to, at this point, set any meetings or anything. So I think if we can just continue the work on it, it seems like most of the commissioners seem to be happy with the design itself. And it's, it's within, at least, you know, thank you for, for all the work so far put into it, and it does fall within, you know, the guidelines. So I think it's not so far off, but I think it would be good to have more information. Any commissioners, if I know, want to add anything else that you provide, or if not, I think that seems to be enough direction.
Yes, thank you. Staff will take the direction from the commission and then we'll back, come back to the mission after performing some additional studies and it'll come back to a notice public hearing. So we will renotice the neighbors for, for those of you who are participating or listening to this meeting. We will renotice the public and the neighborhood for our foremost planning commission meeting once we have a, once we have explored the other options and worked with the neighbors to find a resolution.
Thank you very much. So with that, we'll go ahead on to item number six, which is stop updates on the submitted planning applications and future planning commission meetings. Just informational.
Thank you, Chair Joe. This is Ross Camada, Planning Manager. Just a few updates. On October twenty seventh last week, staff attended the second webinar on creating a more affordable future. Presented, it's on the website, letstalkhousing.org/events, presented by the county. And that one was on housing and racial equity. Again, this is a four-part series. The next one is on November tenth, and that is on housing in a climate of change. Feel free to encourage and send this information to anybody who may want to, to, to listen or, or benefit from these webinars. And then the last one is on December first, and that's putting it all together for a better future. Again, for more information, go to www.letstalkhousing.org/events. Regarding future planning commission meeting, we will have another planning commission meeting on November fifteenth. We'll have at least one item. Technically, technically, two items, one public hearing and consent calendar item for an extension for an existing designer permit. Those are currently the ones that we have scheduled, maybe one more, but it, it does look like we will have that meeting. And just projecting a little bit further out, December, we, we do anticipate two meetings in December as well.
Thank you.
And that, that concludes staff's updates this evening.
Thank you. And then going on to item seven, planning commissioner announcements. Do we have any announcement? Commissioner Quick?
I might as well plug the Millbrae Community Foundation, their holiday stars. I'm, I'm sending out some letters and thanks to Maureen, does a lovely letter to everyone. And we hope that everyone is willing to make a donation to the Community Foundation and they get a hand painted star on the holiday tree at City Hall. And that event will take place on the fourth. It's the first Saturday of December. But it will be here before you know it, as fast as this whole year has gone by.
And how do people, do you want to say how people can contribute?
Yeah, so you can go to the Millbrae Foundation website and click the button if you want to go ahead and make a donation. We're also accepting donations for the recreation center. So in addition to our regular projects, you also have the option for a donation for the recreation center this year. So you can go to the website or there's an address for the foundation, which is P O Box sixteen twelve Millbrae. Or you can call me or send me an email.
Really card. Thank you. Any others? Commissioner Del Negro? Did you, did you want to say something, Commissioner Del Negro?
I did attend the Millbrae Man and Woman and Student of the Year. It's a fantastic event. It was wonderful to celebrate the three individuals that had given Millbrae so much over their time.
It was a very nice event.
Anyone else? Okay, so with that, we're gonna go ahead and adjourn our planning commission meeting for this, for today. And thank you very much, everyone, for attending and have a good evening.
Bye-bye. Thank you.
We'll see you in a couple of weeks.
Yep, see you in a couple of weeks.